Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 14th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the City of Burbank Planning Commission. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the Planning Commission oral communication on any matter concerning city business. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public hearing, during the general public hearing, public comment periods. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Please join us in a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The Planning Commission welcomes everyone joining us this evening. Oh, sorry, I didn't, oh. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and work, and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our own individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. All right? Will everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please conduct the roll?
Vice Chair Wick?
Present.
Commissioner Safarian?
Present.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
And Commissioner Adakanyan?
Present.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements from staff?
No announcements tonight.
All right. Moving on, there are two public hearing items on tonight's agenda. Now is the time and place for the public hearing of project number 24-0004295, a request for a conditional use permit, CUP, from Verizon Wireless to allow the construction and operation of an unmanned freestanding monopole wireless telecommunications facility, WTF, within an existing surface lot area at 2240 North Hollywood Way, the project site. The project site is currently being used as a self-storage facility, public storage. The proposed WTF would be a 65-foot in height and designed to resemble a eucalyptus tree. The project also includes a new 378-square-foot walled equipment area to house the WTF and associated equipment. The project site is zoned M2, general industrial zone, and has a general plan, land use designation of Golden State Commercial/Industrial. Before we begin, do any planning commissioners have any legal, financial, or any other conflict of interests relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. No. Have any planning commissioner members had any communications, including written or oral, with any person about this project?
No.
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 Mr. Planbeck, have the notices required been, by law, been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
There was one written item that's part of your packet tonight.
Great. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter before us?
Hello. Hello, good evening. May I please have the presentation on the slide? Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Wick and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Hernick, Assistant Planner with the City of Burbank Community Development Department. This evening, I'm presenting an application for a freestanding monopole wireless telecommunications facility for the property at 2240 North Hollywood Way. The applicant's representative, Mr. Eric Muers, is here tonight and will be available to respond to any questions the Planning Commission may have after this presentation. The project site is an interior lot measuring approximately 2.28 acres, located at the intersection of North Hollywood Way and Valhalla Drive, south of Empire Avenue and southeast from the Burbank, Hollywood Burbank Airport. The project site is zoned M2, general industrial, with a land use designation of Golden State Commercial/Industrial, which is intended to be a commercial and industrial hub that supports regional employment, complementary to the airport and media-related uses. The surrounding area around the project site is primarily industrially zoned, with commercial and industrial buildings to the north, south, east, and west, and a industrial zone parcel occupied by Providence Elementary School, also to the east. Multifamily and single-family residential zones are within approximately 500 feet to the southwest and 900 to the east. Due to the project site's proximity to the airport, any structure proposed over 35 feet high must get approval from the Federal Aviation Administration. The project site is improved with an existing three-story, 123,466-square-foot public storage building. And the adjoining lot immediately to the east is improved with a single-story, 14,000-square-foot building occupied by the Burbank Elks Lodge 1497. Both parcels share a single entrance from North Hollywood Way and share 146 surface parking spaces. The improvements on this site and the abutting parcel were approved through two separate entitlements. A conditional use permit and development review in 1999 approved the Elks Lodge use in the M2 zone, allowed onsite alcohol sales and consumption at the Elks Lodge, and allowed development of the commercial building that is currently used as the Elks Lodge. The entitlement also approved development of a new office building on the project site, which was never constructed. A 2004 development review allowed construction and operation of the public storage building on the project site and approved a shared parking arrangement between the public storage use and the Elks Lodge, identifying a minimum of 136 spaces needed in order to meet the peak shared demand for both uses. Shown here are recent photos of the project site. On the left is a photo taken from the site entrance at North Hollywood Way looking eastward into the site, and on the right shows the location of the proposed wireless telecommunications facility within the surface parking lot. The applicant, Verizon Wireless, has applied for a conditional use permit to construct and operate a new unmanned monopole wireless telecommunications facility, which is required for this type of wireless facility in non-residential zones per BMC Section 10-1-111C. The WTF development standards and the M2 general industrial development standards also require CUP for structures over 35 feet in height. Here is a photo simulation of the proposed project. The monopole would be 65 feet high and designed to resemble a eucalyptus tree. The antennas would operate between 45 and 60 feet above grade, and the monopole and all associated equipment, such as the generator and a transformer, would be located within a 378-square-foot equipment enclosure with eight-foot-high decorative masonry walls matching the existing trash enclosure on site. The facility would operate 24/7 and has been designed to allow for the future co-location of at least one additional wireless carrier. Shown here is the proposed north elevation of the facility, with heights of the wall on the equipment enclosure, the bottom and top of the branch cover, and the antennas shown relative to grade. There's also a photo of the existing trash enclosure on site that the equipment enclosure has been conditioned to match. Shown here is the proposed site plan. The equipment enclosure would be located at the southeast corner of the project site, approximately 10 feet from the property line with the abutting parcel. The project would entail removal of four existing shared parking spaces, bringing the number of onsite spaces from 146 to 142. However, the remaining number of spaces would still exceed the 136 spaces identified as peak demand for both the public storage and the Elks Lodge uses during the 2004 development review process for the public storage building. The location of the equipment enclosure would not interfere with site circulation, nor is it anticipated to impact the existing uses, and the application does not include any alteration to the existing structures or landscaping. Shown here on the equipment enclosure plan in red is an overhead view of the equipment attached to the monopole. The green circle shows the diameter of the monopole, including the faux eucalyptus branches and leaves. The location of the equipment enclosure is not anticipated to impact the existing mature wilga trees at the perimeter of the site. Consistent with previous entitlements for wireless telecommunications facilities, staff incorporated conditions of approval into the resolution in order to assure, ensure compliance with all applicable development standards, mitigate potential future maintenance issues, and ensure ongoing compatibility with onsite and surrounding uses. These conditions are detailed in full in the resolution. Key conditions of approval include, but are not limited to, the following. The applicant will need to provide proof of the Federal Aviation Administration approval of the applicant's notice of intent to construct. Several recommended conditions of approval have been included to address code requirements for FCC licensing and ongoing compliance, and the applicant will be required to provide updated licensing at the time intervals required by BMC Section 10-1-111E, including upon submission into PlanCheck, within 30 days of installation, and every five years thereafter. And this section of the zoning code allows the city to impose mitigation measures to ensure ongoing compliance with FCC regulations. Pursuant to the BMC, CUPs for wireless facilities expire after 10 years, so this project will need to renew their application, which may require updating the facility to meet the requirements at that time. Recommended conditions of approval have also been included to address ongoing project maintenance, including upkeep of landscaping, requiring that the faux branches and leaves be repaired and/or replaced such that the facility maintains the stealth appearance for the life of the project, and to post warning signage and contact information for the operator. Additional recommended conditions include stipulating that the equipment enclosures, requiring that, maintaining the landscaping around the enclosure for the life of the project, requiring that the applicant replace landscaping if damaged during construction or maintenance, and that all vehicles associated with construction or maintenance of the facility park on site. Staff is also recommending an amendment to condition number 19, which, as written in the resolution currently, requires the applicant to replace any damaged branches or leaves within 10 business days. However, staff is now recommending that this condition require that the applicant initiate and complete all repair work within 60 days of discovery or notification by the city for the life of the project. As part of staff's review of a CUP request, the project was reviewed for consistency with the Burbank 2035 general plan, the applicable zoning regulations, including the development standards for wireless telecommunications facilities, M2 general industrial zoning, and general commercial and industrial zoning. The project was reviewed for consistency with the neighborhood context and reviewed for consistency with the required CUP findings per BMC Section 10-1-1936, as detailed in the staff report and attached resolution. And the conditions of approval ensure the project's compatibility with the surrounding land uses. As outlined in staff's report, it is staff's assessment that with the associated conditions of approval, the project complies with all applicable requirements. Based on staff's assessment, the project qualifies for a categorical exemption under Section 15303E, Class 3 of the State SEQA Guidelines, pertaining to new construction of limited numbers of new small facilities or structures, and installation of small new equipment and facilities in small structures. This exemption is applicable because the project involves construction of a new small facility with small equipment, such as a freestanding monopole WTF, and there are no unusual circumstances that would preclude the use of this exemption. Public outreach for this project was done in accordance with BMC Section 10-1-1942, which includes a newspaper notice, mailed notices to tenants and property owners within a 1,000-foot radius, and installation of an onsite sign, all at least 10 business days prior to this hearing. Staff received one public comment via email related to concerns of RF emissions and the aesthetics of a monopole WTF, and it has been included as Exhibit G. Staff finds that the project is exempt from SEQA. The project is consistent with the general plan, and the project satisfies the required findings for a conditional use permit. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the following resolution approving project number 24-0004295, subject to the conditions of approval as amended. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Burbank approving project number 24-0004295, a conditional use permit to construct and operate an unmanned freestanding monopole wireless telecommunications facility located at 2240 North Hollywood Way, and finding the project categorically exempt under SEQA based on the findings of fact and subject to the attached conditions of approval as amended. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for any questions the commission may have.
Great. Thank you very much. I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the Planning Commission. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes.
Good evening, Vice Chair Wick and Commissioners. I am Eric Muers with PlanCom, representing Verizon Wireless. And first and foremost, I want to thank Sarah for just an outstanding job on her presentation as well as working with us through this project. She's been a really a pleasure to work with, so we appreciate you, Sarah. Thank you. As for the conditions, we're willing to accept everything as written with a couple of last second, and I apologize, you know, for a couple of last second requests for clarification or just a little bit of a change. But condition number eight, that's the one where it requires the FAA, or FAA application prior to filing for a building permit. Oftentimes, through the building permit process, there are changes that kind of happen. We would like to amend that to make it where we could file that FAA further into the process. We have an airspace tool that we use initially that will tell us whether FAA filings are required, which we can provide initially, you know, the findings of that with our BP filing. And then through the PlanCheck process, if there's no changes, we can go ahead and make that filing with the FAA and provide that prior to issuance of the building permit, if staff or commission would be amenable to that. That's the one question. And then the second is on the requirement for the, excuse me, the EME report, RF report, every five years. Verizon's asked if we could add language to clarify only if facility equipment or output levels have been changed. Oftentimes, you know, nothing changes in those five years, so having to do a report would just be repetitive to what you've already had. But that is a change or a simple amendment that they're asking if that would be possible. So, other than that, we're willing to accept the conditions as written, and thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions you guys might have.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to planning staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to speak by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Commission. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us, as it may take a couple minutes for the first callers to get through the line. Please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take the phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers here tonight on this matter?
We have no speakers or callers.
Okay. We'll give it a minute. No one on the line? All right. There being no public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
We do have comments on the conditions, but we can wait till deliberation with the, with the commission. Just with condition number eight, we can work with the applicant on, and the code actually allows it for them to submit the documentation for the FAA prior to issuance of building permit. And then for condition 23, the code's written that way, so the code requires, the condition is written as the code's written, so we can't amend that one.
Thank you so much. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You'll have a maximum time of 10 minutes. No? Okay, great. All right. Does the commission have any staff, or any questions for staff or the applicant?
Yes. I just had a question when I was looking at the plans, and, you know, let me know if I'm missing something here, but it says that the enclosure is going to be about 581 square feet total, but in the staff report, it's saying that it's less than that. Is that...
Yeah, so the lease area is 581 square feet, and the, the plan is more clear on that. But the dimensions of the, the actual enclosure itself is, comes to 378 square feet. So, the 378 is, is the math that I did. And, but the, on, on that site plan that the applicant provided, it shows the, the lease area that Verizon is leasing from the public storage building.
Okay, so they're not going to use the entire space that they're leasing, is what we're seeing?
The entire lease space, like, exceeds the walled equipment enclosure area, and it would include a landscape buffer to the, right along the west side of that equipment enclosure. And I think the applicant might be able to clarify further, but that's, to the best of my knowledge, that's what that 581 square feet includes.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I had a question about the SEQA exemption. So, I know it says for small, new small facilities, and I just wanted to know if there's, you know, more clarification on what constitutes a small facility? Is there like a size limit?
Thank you for the question. No, the, the SEQA guidelines do not specify a size limit. They do speak to various structures, like, they give examples for structures that would include, like, garages. And this structure is a similar size to that, and it is the best, the best exemption that fits this, this project?
Because it's going to be 65 feet high.
It is.
So that's a large structure.
To, to staff's point, SEQA guidelines don't specify the height or the square footage for a small structure. It simply gives examples of small structures. It actually has small structures, like small hotels and things, things of that sort. So, it is of the opinion of, of staff that this still complies with that SEQA exemption, because SEQA, just give the city some discretion when we review these, that it's considered which, which SEQA exemption best fits the project. In this case, we believe this is the best fit.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. And I believe that is, those are my only questions. I did want to mention a potential condition. Should I wait till after everyone else asks their questions, or...
Um, you can mention it now if you'd like.
Um...
Up to you.
Okay, because I know that there's concern with emissions from the public, and we did get Communications Act of 1996. Only the federal government may regulate the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions from wireless telecommunications facilities. So, that's potentially something you can add just to mitigate that the local control is not as...
That'd be something that the commission would need to consider and direct staff to add.
Great. Thank you. That's all I had.
Great. Anyone else?
No, I didn't have anything.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentations. Got a quick question about condition eight, I believe. I'm sorry, 16. The walled equipment enclosure will be finished with decorative masonry matching the existing onsite trash enclosure. I'm, I'm mostly concerned about maintenance. You know, in the event of degradation of the wall, paintings, graffiti, anything of that nature. Same goes to item 17, because it doesn't specify frequency. Is there someone who's going to come out and check it out? Or is, we just leave it up to the general community to say, well, you know, you have to come out and fix this? And who do they contact, or what do they do? I just want to make sure that the spirit of the condition is adhered to. That's all. Perhaps we need to add something about a frequency. Once a month, once every two months, someone has to come out and check the facilities and give it a thumbs up. Yes, landscaping is in nice condition. The walls are nice and neat, and everything's okay.
We can have the applicant speak to frequency of coming to the site. I do believe it'll come once a month, if the applicant can...
Yeah, excuse me. The maintenance, they have site technicians that come to the sites routinely, about once a month, once every six weeks or so to check on things. If there is any maintenance items required, they would generally take care of those at that time. But, you know, if, if you desire to have something more than that, we can certainly discuss it. But I, you know, they do take pretty good care of the facilities, as well as our landlord, public storage, has onsite management team that, you know, is there all the time. So, if something is to happen, they'll identify it for, for us, as well as our landlord.
All right. So, you wouldn't be opposed to language that says, "Visit by lessors", I mean, lesses' maintenance team every 60 days or something to that effect?
I mean...
That's, that's two months, you know, that gives them enough time to make the cycle.
They're generally there anyway, so that would be okay.
Okay. Appreciate it. All right. Second question I had is item number eight, since you're up here, sir.
Sure.
I know it was addressed, but did you want to, was that a proposed language you wanted to add?
It was just that, just offer that, that we are able to file with an airspace. I think the directors identified it as that, you know, we just modify it to where we would provide the FAA compliance documents at issuance of building permit.
Okay. And...
Versus at application of PlanCheck.
All right. And I just, and item 23, Mr. Planbeck, I think you commented on that, that it is, it is a requirement, correct? So, there's not going to be any modifications to that?
That's correct. We can modify it. It's written.
Understood.
Even though equipment does not change, but science changes, maybe they'll find something, who knows? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Does any, anyone else have any questions? Well, my fellow commissioners have asked all the questions that I have asked, and so I won't repeat. So, thank you so much to staff for that report. Where are we? No more questions? Just making sure? Okay. I now declare the public hearing closed, and the Planning Commission will now deliberate. What is the Planning Commission's pleasure?
I can go first. Well, it, it seems that everything's in order. I do want to comment on the one person who provided or submitted an opposition to this. I did review it. However, I didn't quite understand the gist of it in the sense that it did not have any supporting data. It was just a general statements made, and I thought it was kind of a cotton paste type of a thing. But nevertheless, they, they did comment on it, and I wish they had, I would have invited them to include data that supports their position versus just, you know, this is not good, I don't like this, look at it, and so forth and so on. I mean, it is federally regulated, so if they have some data that rebuts what the FCC has done, we would be more than willing to look at it, but otherwise, then, you know, consider that. And it was of no consequence, so I would be able to support the project with the amendment for the frequency.
I'll say this, going, going off that. Since this is most definitely not the commission's first rodeo into cellphone towers, and I'm guessing it will not be our last, given the fact that technology is always growing and always improving, that, you know, I feel like we're all... we're all very, very sensitive to concerns over placement of cell towers and everything else, but they are federally regulated, and so even if, you know, we, we receive a letter where it pulls at our heartstrings, what we can and can't do with this commission is very precise, and so I will say that, going off to what you said.
No, I mean, going off of that, what I mentioned earlier, to add that condition, just so it's very clear that it is federally regulated, and cite the section, I have no problem with the project.
Commissioner Bennett, any thoughts?
I mean, we'll discuss the amendments, but I am good with it otherwise.
Well, we're deliberating now, so now is the time to...
Oh, well, okay. Well, I guess what has been proposed specifically, then? Let's discuss them, you know, one by one.
All right. And for item 16 and 17, I propose to add the language, "Lessies," I presume the Verizon is the "lessie" in this instance, "Lessies' maintenance crew shall visit the proposed site once every, minimum once every 60 days."
So, my concern on this, I guess, is that it's not a uniform guideline, right? I don't, I don't think it's good for us to impose one-off conditions on sites like this, that if I were trying to build thousands of structures across thousands of cities, I would struggle to try and keep track of. You know, one city says you have to visit this thing every 30 days, one city says every three months, different cities says, "Yeah, check it every week," right? It's just not manageable. So, while I appreciate the spirit that you're proposing this in, and I am sympathetic to it, I would, I don't know that it's fair to burden the applicant with this specific one-off condition for this site.
Well, I, I understand. That's a fair point. Just because City of Glendale doesn't think of it and doesn't want to take it into consideration. It is, it is an additional burden. That's why I asked the applicant if they do have people, or how is this going to come about? So, he volunteers the information, saying, "Well, they do have people visiting the site every, every month or so, or six weeks." So, in that regard, I didn't think that it would be burdensome to add the language...
And I appreciate that, but once we impose a legal requirement, if they start tweaking their visits, and they are out of compliance with something 20 years from now, right, that imposes a legal burden on the applicant, I guess I would, I would go the other direction and say that we can take it on reasonable faith that the applicant will be visiting the site regularly, plus the public storage people are there every day, because it's their site, and so we can take it on good faith that the site will be regularly monitored. This is not a remote, you know, location.
And Chair, if I could chime in?
Please.
Good evening, Chair, fellow commissioners. There is some FCC guidance as well, warning agencies against discriminating against different cell tower applications. So, I was kind of waiting to see how you fleshed out this proposed condition, but I generally would agree with Commissioner Bennett on treading carefully with one-off conditions that aren't, of course, from our municipal code that we're, that we're applying to this particular application, that we haven't in past applications before us.
And what portion of visit the site at least every 60 days to maintain it is discriminatory?
Well, so it really depends on, I would need to hear your exact proposed language, but if we're imposing extra maintenance requirements, visit requirements, on this particular cell tower application, we haven't imposed those in other applications that I'm, that I'm aware of, and I'm not sure that we have authority in our municipal code to kind of have the discretion to impose those additional checkups and maintenance obligations.
If I understand this correctly, this is a contractual relationship, a relationship between approving this and adding all these conditions between the "lessie," they have a contract with the "lesser," and the city. I'm sorry, I wasn't here for the other ones to add this condition, but I'm concerned about how this, how it will look. I mean, you can put landscaping in there, and it'll go to, you know, it'll become a eyesore later, or things happen to the wall, and no one maintains it, and it goes on for months and months, and it's an eyesore. As I was coming in today, I saw the fountain. The fountain, I mean, that's in front of a city hall. It's an eyesore. So, there seems to be a need for, and I'm going to comment on this, on the other project as well. As a city, I think we should be concerned about what the city looks like, right? I think everybody does. What the neighborhoods look like, what the city looks like, what are we presenting? What are we projecting? What are our values in terms of how we want to run our city? So, I don't think this is a one-off, and I don't think it's discriminatory, and I think the applicant was willing, and, well, we should ask the applicant if they oppose such a condition. If they do not oppose such a condition, I don't think there should be an issue on this. Sir, would you be kind enough to come up and tell us if you oppose a condition of just having some maintenance, your maintenance people that visit every month or six weeks, visit every 60 days, let's say every two months?
I mean, I, I understand your desire, and I think, you know, one of the things, too, we have is code enforcement act, action, so, I mean, you know, we do have that as an option. I mean, accepting a condition, you know, if that's what it's going to take to, to get you to vote yes, then yeah, I have no problem with that.
Is this, is this something that's going to be very burdensome on...
It shouldn't be too burdensome. I mean, yes, I mean, he is correct. We have a lot of sites, you know, we have over 3,000 sites just in the Southern California market, so there's a lot of stuff to visit, and so having it set as a, "Hey, you have to be there every 60 days," I'm just saying that as a routine, they visit the sites pretty regularly and check them out.
Would you be comfortable with 90 days?
Sure.
I don't oppose to 90 days. I mean, as long as there's someone who's going to regularly, you know, every quarter, at least go there and take a look at it, and, and say, "You know what? This site is acceptable. It looks decent. It looks nice. Okay, we're good with it."
Yeah, I understand.
I'm not, I'm not asking for a gold-plated or gilded walls. All I'm saying is...
I agree.
Whatever's put in is maintained. That's all.
Sure. That's fair.
Is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I don't think the applicant opposes, so if the applicant doesn't oppose, that would be my proposal.
Anyone else before I chime in?
I'm with you. I completely agree that we should, we should have standards that we hold ourselves to. I completely agree, and especially given the fact that it is a tree, it's maybe more of like a specialty structure. I completely understand that it may need some more maintenance than a regular structure, and I'm with you on maintenance within the city. We need to pride ourselves on that. Where my concern lies is what the city attorney was saying, where, and I don't necess, and I agree with you that I don't necessarily think it's discriminatory, but I do think it's very, it, it's very difficult where we start putting in specific language for specific sites, when there are so many cellphone towers in the city, and I'm, I'm assuming there are multiple cellphone towers that are Verizon-owned within the city. And so, I feel like that just gets a little confusing in, in nature. From what I'm aware, Verizon has been a good partner to the city. I don't, I haven't seen any evidence in the staff report that they've been a bad partner, given the fact, too, that it is onsite for public storage. Public storage has their own maintenance. Members of the public at any time can use the graffiti removal tool on the app, they can call code enforcement. I mean, I'm, let me just state, I'm not within the 500 radius, but I live somewhat close to the area, and so I'm out walking, and, you know, I definitely report graffiti myself in areas. And so, with that being said, I, I do think that it just, it gets a little wordy into the weeds, where it's not, where I think it's just kind of a slippery slope, but I, if it wasn't for what the city attorney said, I would have been on that train with you, so...
And Samantha, just one thing that you said, the tree structure itself is regulated under condition 19.
Correct.
So, it's just, we were talking about the wall as opposed to the tree.
I'm more concerned about the landscaping in front, because 371, 578, 200 some square feet of dirt is there, landscaping is going to be laid out, how's it going to be maintained? And the walls, that's all. I mean, I don't think it's burdensome, and we heard from the applicant. That's fine. I'm okay with it, in terms of the thought process, or the approach, and so forth and so on. I just don't think that we need to use language like it was somehow discriminatory to require that, you know, someone maintain the structure or something that they're doing. And additionally, we did have the applicant's acquiescence in terms of, "Oh, yes, we'll visit every 90 days. That's not, that's not burdensome. We're going to go out there anyway." So, I'm okay with it. That's fine.
Okay. And I, and I hear you on that one. I just, I just, I think it, again, becomes a very slippery slope, because then it's, I mean, and maybe this is what you were alluding to, in terms of maintenance, then we're adding a maintenance requirement to every conditional use permit, and then how do we enforce it? Like, staff is already very busy, and adding something else that they need to enforce, when, again, to Commissioner Bennett's point, on 19, it discusses the maintenance of the tree, and if we add in the federal requirement as well.
So, I also, I agree with Commissioner Bennett, that it would be kind of an erroneous, you know, condition to state, but the tree is the most important, I believe, because the branches do fall off and deteriorate over time, and they need to be maintained. I think as far as the enclosure goes, it's in the rear 50% of the lot, and it's so far back that with all the cars in the lot, it's barely visible from the street, and we do have code enforcement in place for things such as this. If, you know, there's graffiti, or if it's, you know, degrading, then they can go out and handle that at that time when it does happen. But I do believe the applicant that they'll work in good faith to go out as they stated, and I do agree that adding that condition may be just a lot of work for the staff, or discriminatory, what you thought I was saying?
Yeah, and I just want to elaborate. So, the language discriminatory, that's the language used by the FCC.
Right.
I didn't come up with that language, but really, I think layman's terms, I would just say, you know, differentiate your regulations to a severe degree amongst different service providers. So, to my knowledge, there is no specific call-out about imposing an every 60-day, or some kind of periodic, maintenance inspection obligation, but I just mean generally, that principle's out there. It's an FCC order, so I was just saying, you know, tread carefully in how we do that. I mean, also, for me to call balls and strikes on that one, it's really difficult, because I don't know the level of resources that would be required for them to do that. I would also point out, I think there's, there's general public nuisance remedies as well, if, if it was to fall into some sort of disrepair. It looks like condition 13 addresses that as well. I know generally speaking, I mean, I've been before council and planning commission on a lot of these entitlements, we do often have to state that our code enforcement is reactive, just, it's just a matter of numbers game, right? I mean, we usually get calls, and that's how we respond, because we can't dedicate resource to checkup on every single property. So, but our code enforcement is active, and I know we have available technology. So, that's my long way to say, there is no FCC guidance specifically calling out this proposed additional condition of approval that you mentioned, but I would just say, it, it calls into question FCC's guidance on being consistent with your regulations as applied to the different service providers.
I appreciate it. I don't think I'm proposing anything extraordinary or unreasonable, but nevertheless, you guys talked me into it. That's fine. I'll give up on this. Let the citizens of Burbank make phone calls. All I was doing is trying to look out for the Burbankians, that's all, you know? If it's an eyesore, it's an eyesore. No one wants an eyesore. That's all.
And I, I think that's very much appreciated, and just, from my time on this commission, I feel like Burbank citizens are not shy in contacting code enforcement when something is amiss, and since there is language in condition 19 about the tree, I, I'm comfortable moving forward with, without the, without the requirement.
What language do we need to adopt to amend point eight, as requested by the applicant?
We can read it into the record. I had recommended language here prior to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11308, pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11308, the applicant shall submit documentation of FAA approval of the project prior to issuance of the building permit. So, we would remove with the building permit application and include it in the plan set submitted in the plan check review. That would be eliminated, and we simply say prior to the issuance of building permit, which is consistent with that code section.
Okay, very good.
So, we can add that language and amend it after the meeting?
Sure. Okay, good.
Got it. Any other amendments?
Amendments, no, but it's to add this condition, if, obviously, you guys all agree to add this condition.
Sorry, what?
It's not more of a condition, I mean, it's a condition, but it's just to put it in the record, and going forward on cell towers, I would want to see this written out, that pursuant to Section 704A Title VII of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, "Only the federal government may regulate the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions from wireless telecommunications facilities."
Okay. So, this is more of, I guess, a clarification in your mind?
For people who are...
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, for the public who comments against it.
Very good. And staff, did you have any thoughts on that?
I'm writing it down here, silly. And we'll go back and watch the recording, of course.
So, necessarily a legal comment, but typically, conditions of approval are strictly for obligations, right? So, may I just suggest that if you want to put that statement as one of the findings in the resolution, that might be a better place for it, but again, if you, if you prefer to have that statement, it means a lot to include in the conditions of approval. Again, it's not going to, it's not going to deny what you would otherwise approve. I just think that that would probably be a better place for, for that statement.
Sure.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
And this, and we read into the record that changed to condition 19. Does one confirm that the commission understands the change, and have any questions regarding that?
Yes. So, adding section of, what is it? Of the F, I don't want to read all that again.
So, condition 19, the last sentence was amended.
No, it's just talking about something different, not this... I was going, I was finishing this thought before we go to that thought.
We're going to add that as a finding, we said, right?
Yeah, as a finding.
Okay, great.
All right. So, the finding will be sectional for A Title VII, yada, yada. Yeah. As, as stated before.
Yes.
Sorry, I know that yada, yada is...
I know what you mean. On, on 19, this copy I have has the amended language. Okay.
Okay. And so, 19, as amended.
Yes.
Yes, they, we have, you received a copy of the amended language. Just wanted to make sure the commission understands the amended language.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
So, so just to recap, because we bounced around a little bit, it, we would be, if somebody would like to make a motion for approval, if we're not, if we're done deliberating, it would be eight, as amended, 16, we're leaving the same. We're not doing that, and then adding the findings. And 19 as amended. And 19 is amended. Yeah.
Yes. Do you want to make that motion?
Motion to approve. Do I have to say the full thing?
Can she?
For me, it's sufficiently clear. You, you stated that you're adding the finding as, as expressed on the record.
Yes.
You're amending condition of approval number 19, as reflected in the record as well.
Yes.
And you are amending condition of approval number eight, as expressed by Assistant Director Planbeck as well.
Great, and I will second the motion, then.
Got it. Madam Clerk, can we conduct a roll?
Vice Chair Wick?
Yes.
Commissioner Safarian?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
And Commissioner Attakani.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Give staff a minute to just reset.
Fair enough.
And also, do I have to find my place? So, I'm biding time. All right. Moving on to item number two, now is the time in place for the public hearing of project number 24-0002528, a request for a conditional use permit, CUP, application from the, I'm gonna mispronounce this, could you help me out? Help me out here. Hiwa Sake Brewery USA to consider several proposed operational amendments to the existing CUP, project number 15-0008223, which authorized the operation of a small beer manufacturer use ABC License 23 and an incidental indoor tasting area at the project site located at 156 West Verdugo Avenue. The proposed amendments to the existing CUP include the following. Establish a new 838 square foot indoor/outdoor tasting area. Attain a new type 2 ABC license to authorize the production, sale, and tasting of sake, Japanese rice wine. And obtain a new type 9 ABC Beer and Wine importer license to authorize the sale of imported slash exported beer and wine. The project site is zoned M2 general industrial zone and has a general plan land use designation of North Victory Commercial Industrial. Before we begin, do any planning commission members have any legal, financial, or any other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
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 No. Have any planning commission members had any communications, including written or oral, with any person about this project?
No.
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 Mr. Planbeck, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
No, there is not.
All right. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter before us?
Good evening. May I have the presentation, please? Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Wick and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Eduardo Rendon, planning technician with the Burbank Community Development Department. This evening, I'm presenting an application requesting to amend an existing conditional use permit through project number 240002528 for Trustworthy Brewing Company located at 156 West Verdugo Avenue. The business representative of Trustworthy Brewing Company and the applicant, Hiwasaki Brewing USA Incorporated, are here tonight and will be available to respond to any questions the Planning Commission may have after this presentation. The project site is located along West Verdugo Avenue between South Lake Street and South Varney Street. The project site identified in the dash yellow lines is Trustworthy Brewing Company, an existing beer manufacturer with incidental tasting located in the M2 general industrial zone. There's a loading area at the front of the property and the lot is served by four parking spaces at the rear of the lot accessed through a 15-foot wide alley. The project site is centrally located between industrial, commercial, and residential uses. Shown here are recent photos of the existing conditions of the surrounding land uses near the project site. The photo on this slide show the surrounding land uses within West Verdugo Avenue between South Lake Street and Varney Street. The photos on this slide show the surrounding land uses around the project site on South Lake Street, South Varney Street, and the entrance to the service alley along Lake Street. South Lake Street. The project site has a zoning designation of M2 general industrial zone. This project site is mainly surrounded by commercial and manufacturing uses on all directions with a mixture of low, medium, and high-density residential zone properties to the west and to the south, including a multifamily complex approximately 80 feet away from the project site. The general plan designation for the project site is North Victory Commercial Industrial, which supports a mix of commercial and industrial uses. Trustworthy Brewing Company is currently licensed by the city as a brewing manufacturer with an incidental 671 square foot tasting area in a 7,445 square foot building on a 10,000 square foot lot. The brewery is currently approved for a type 23 ABC license with an incidental tasting room area through a conditional use permit, project number 150008223, approved by the city on February 2016. Currently, the beer manufacturing portion of the business operates from Monday through Sunday, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Office hours are Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The tasting room hours of operation are Wednesday through Friday, 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And on Saturdays, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and on Sundays, 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The Burbank Police Department has reported a low number of police service calls at the project site between 2016 and 2025, primarily related to building alarm issues, and conducted one arrest for public intoxication in 2024. The police department has stated that the business has had minimal effect on police services. Shown here are recent photos of the existing brewery as seen from the exterior of the building's entrance, loading zone, rear parking lot, and the inside of the brewery's tasting area. As previously noted, the applicant is requesting to amend an existing conditional use permit to modify Planning Commission Resolution Number 8223 that was originally approved by the planning board on February of 2016. The conditional use permit allows Trustworthy Brewing Company to operate as a beer manufacturer with an incidental tasting and onsite and offsite sale and consumption of beer within a 7,445 square foot building. The requested amendments to the CUP would allow for the modifications of the existing ABC type 23 Small Beer Manufacturer License to relocate the existing tasting area to the front entrance of the building and expand the tasting area from 671 square feet to 838 square feet. The expansion of the tasting area will have an indoor and outdoor adjacent area and will also serve as a loading zone outside of the proposed tasting hours of operation. Additionally, the applicant is proposing two new ABC licenses, a type O2 Wine Grower License to produce and sell sake, and a type O9 Beer and Wine importer license to import and export beer and wine. The applicant, Hiwasaki Brewery USA Incorporated, plans to take over the existing trustworthy operations and will be subject to the recommended approval of this application. Trustworthy Brewing Company will remain a small beer manufacturer as authorized by their existing alcohol beverage control license type 23, and all other operations will remain unchanged, including the previously approved hours of operation. The slide shows the existing floor plan. The main entrance is located to the northwest of the lot and accessible through Verdugo Avenue. The main entrance area is used as a loading zone that serves an indoor receiving area. The existing 671 square foot tasting area is centrally located within the building between the brewery area and the receiving loading zone. The rear entrance is located at the rear of the lot, adjacent to the four-car parking lot and accessible through a 15-foot wide alley to the southeast. The applicant is proposing to relocate the existing tasting area to the front of the building where it will be combined with the existing loading zone. As noted in the project's condition of approval, during tasting hours of operation, the loading zone will become part of the tasting area, increasing the tasting area for onsite consumption of beer to an indoor and outdoor adjacent area. The loading zone, highlighted in red, will operate outside of the tasting area hours of operation and tables. They will operate outside of the tasting area hours of operation. Tables, chairs, and any other equipment will need to be removed from the loading zone area outside of the tasting hours of operation. There are no changes proposed to the existing parking lot and there is no new square footage being proposed to the existing structure. Staff recommends ongoing compliance with amended and restated conditions of approval incorporated into the resolution that places limitations on the existing beer manufacturer business operations in order to mitigate potential negative impacts to the surrounding uses and are detailed in full in the resolution. Some of the key conditions of approval include the following. Onsite and offsite sales and consumption of beer and wine as allowed by ABC type 23 Small Beer Manufacturer License. The tasting area should not operate during late night hours between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. Last call to take orders for alcohol should be no later than 9:30 PM. No alcoholic beverages are allowed beyond the tasting area. The tasting area should not expand beyond 838 square feet. A dance floor and live entertainment is prohibited. Based on staff assessments, this project qualifies for a categorical exemption from the California Environment Quality Act, or SEQA, under Section 15301, because the project involves negligible or no expansion of existing or former use and there are no unusual circumstances that would preclude the use of this exemption. As part of staff's review, the request to modify the conditional use permit, the project was reviewed for consistency with the Burbank 2035 general plan, the applicable zoning regulations, the required conditional use permit findings pursuant to BMC Section 10-1-1936 as detailed in the staff report and attached to the resolution. Further, the project will be developed and operated in compliance with the recommended conditions of approval to ensure ongoing compatibility with the surrounding land uses. As outlined in the report to the commission, it is staff's assessment that, subject to the amended and restated conditions of approval, the project complies with all applicable requirements. Staff finds that the project is exempt from SEQA, is consistent with the general plan and the applicable zoning standards, and the project, as proposed and subject to the conditional of approval, satisfies the required findings for a conditional use permit. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution amending a conditional use permit through project number 240002528, subject to the amended and restated conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation and staff is available for any questions the commission may have.
Great, thank you very much. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the Planning Commission. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes.
Good evening, thank you very much to the Planning Commission and also to Ed for his fabulous staff report and David and the rest of the planning department for all their work on this project. We're very excited to be here, continuing and evolving an operation in this space. Very happy to be in Burbank. And the applicant is in agreement with all the proposed conditions. I believe condition 47 regarding the sewer facilities charge had a typo at one point, but I believe it's now been corrected. And we have, we are in agreement with all other conditions. The new tenant and operator, Masa, is here to answer any additional operational-related questions. And I'm obviously available for questions as well, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on the matter. Each person may address the Planning Commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to planning staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Commission. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open, please bear with us as it may take a couple minutes for the first callers to get through the line. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers here tonight or callers online for public comment?
We have no speakers or callers.
Great, we'll give it a minute. Nothing, all right. There being no further public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Yes, Vice Chair, regarding the comment by our applicant regarding the condition regarding the sewer charges, that the condition is correct before you and has been corrected beforehand.
Got it, and the applicant has reviewed?
Correct, we reviewed the draft conditions with them beforehand and the condition before you is the correct with the amount.
Great. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You have a maximum time of 10 minutes? Okay, great. Does the Planning Commission have any questions for staff or the applicant?
I have a quick question for staff.
Go for it.
The photographs included in the packet, page two, Exhibit F2, it says northwest view of rear parking lot looking from the budding alley. Is that, I didn't visit the site, I wasn't able to, is there a fence that's closed? I mean, separates the alley from the parking area or it's open?
Thank you for the question. No, there isn't a fence. I believe the alley or the parking area, a fence would block the entrance to the parking if there was, yeah, such a fence.
And you mentioned there was an apartment building 80 feet away?
Yeah, there's an apartment complex approximately 80 feet, I'm gonna say, to the south of, or behind the brewery. Walking this.
Thank you. Is the operator here?
Current.
Current operator?
Yes.
I just wanted to know who's taking over? Okay. Do you, I have a question for you, sir, do you mind coming up?
Me?
Yes, you. Thank you, you're gonna be the new operator, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you're gonna take over the facility, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Some of the photos that we said, this is just a comment or question. Will you be attending to the rear parking area and the front area of the building? Meaning, I saw some of the interior photos and they seem to be nice. So will you make the outside as nice as inside?
Yes, nicer.
Nicer?
Nicer.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, because this photograph looks like an attractive nuisance for kids to come over and, I don't know, use whatever's there or maybe hurt themselves, I don't know. So, all right, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question too, since you're up here. When you say tasting, is it going to be like some people book ahead of time and it's like a group of people that come in for a set tasting? Or is it going to be kind of like a bar where people walk in at any time and drink and leave?
Either way, you can come in anytime, I mean, on the operation hours or they can make a reservation to come as well.
So it's open to the public for those hours? Anybody can walk in during those hours and also you have private tastings?
If private tasting would be like a lot of people and it has to be like separated from the public. I think we should close that time for the public using. But if the booking, advanced booking people are small enough that we can accommodate with the other walking people, then I think we can open that to the public walking as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question as well. Is this your first business? Or do you have an existing business and this is going to be a secondary location?
In the United States, you mean?
Wherever, just.
Yeah, we have, yeah, I have a relation in Japan as well.
Okay, and it's the same, it's the same type of business?
Yes, we, yeah, brewing and a tasting room.
Okay, so you're familiar with alcohol licensing, training your staff to keep things under control, that type of thing?
Very well.
Okay, great. And then, this either may be a question for you or the current operator, I don't know who wants to answer it or who can answer it. I understand that your loading zone is closed during, when the tasting room is open. Do you have any set hours for your loading zone or is it just? Or is it just, oh, as long as the tasting room isn't open, the loading zone can be used?
I haven't set any time, I mean, except not a tasting room is open. But, yeah, so, I don't know, the current.
Okay.
Situation of the time set.
I guess my question for the current operator, how, how often is your loading zone used? And what is it? Yeah, I mean, obviously loading, but do you want to come to the microphone?
It's intermittent based on, oh, I'm sorry.
Just so people can hear.
The use of the loading zone, loading dock area, is intermittent based on the need. It's for delivery of grain and materials and for the pickup of finished beer products. But it's, we only do it during morning hours, and it's, the busiest it's ever been is maybe three days a week.
Okay, all right.
Does that answer that?
Yes.
Right.
Are there any other questions? No questions, all right. Right. Seeing no further questions, I now declare the public hearing closed, and the Planning Commission will now deliberate. What is the Planning Commission's pleasure?
Based on the presentation and the findings, I'm able to support it.
Great, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes, I will second the motion.
Great. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Wick?
Yes.
Commissioner Safarian?
Yes.
Commissioner Attikanian?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Great, thank you so much, good luck to you. Congratulations. Now is the time for reports from city staff. Are there any reports to the commission?
There are no reports to the commission tonight.
Okay, great. Now is the time for the approval of minutes from the January 13, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any questions and/or motion? Think very far back.
I'll let you guys do the.
Well, you weren't here, you weren't here.
We weren't, we weren't here, yeah, yeah.
No. So, how, I have a question for the city, since they weren't here.
I haven't been here in a long time as well, but no, go ahead.
So, would it just be the two of us voting that, okay?
So, so the commissioners that were actually present can vote on it.
Okay.
It is unlike what I call substantive Planning Commission matters, where we would actually need a minimum of three for the approval of the minutes. You just need a majority of those who are, were present available to vote.
And I think that night it was three of us, so we are a majority, right?
Yeah, yes, you had three that night.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, since you're.
Approved.
Approved, I'll second it. All those in paper, aye.
Aye.
Aye, just for the record. All right, we are approved. Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the commission on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the Planning Commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Commission. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Commission. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open, please bear with us as it may take a couple of minutes to get the first callers through the line. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers tonight?
No callers or speakers.
All right, we'll give it a minute, we have such a big crowd here. All right. Nothing? All right. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning Commission members may introduce new agenda items for discussion, but no action may be taken except to place the item on a future agenda. Do members of the commission have any items to introduce?
No.
Okay. You're good? I, I see the hesitation. Oh, okay. Is that a promise or a? Okay. I'm, I don't know if I'm scared or excited. All right, now is the time for city planner comments, are there any comments from the city planner?
Just two quick comments. First, I'd like to welcome back Commissioner Attikanian, welcome back and thank you for serving again. We really appreciate it, it's good to have you and your experience back, so thank you very much. Secondly, I want to make an announcement. Can we pull up the, there's something we need to pull up, there we go. So we just want to announce that the Burbank Rancho Neighborhood Specific Plan website has gone live, and you can reach that website at www.burbankrnsp.com. That's www.burbankrnsp.com. The website provides the opportunity for the Burbank Rancho community to sign up to mailing, to a mailing list and get involved in the specific plan effort by participating in community events and submitting their comments directly to the project team. So this is an opportunity for people to go to the website and, and submit comments or submit their interest in being involved in the process. The website will be updated at each step as the project progresses. We're in the very early part of the stage, and community events are being planned for the near future, so please check the website for future events. Thank you very much.
Great. We will now adjourn to the Planning Commission meeting on Monday, April 28, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. This meeting will be held in person in the City Council chambers at 275 East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person or to view the meeting online or on television. The public will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. In person at the appropriate time during the meeting, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, burbankca.gov/ecomments, or by calling in directly to the Planning Commission meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you all for your participation, and have a good night.